Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the beautiful Humble Coast Conference Center Convention Center. Before I get in trouble from Jennifer, welcome. We are here today for a joint public meeting of Oaklusa County Commissioners, as well as the municipalities that want to participate in this adventure with us. It is a Chapter 164 dispute resolution program wherein five of the cities and the county are official primary members of this to this to this action, as well as the other cities that are here represented to have input. In order for us to get started, what I'd like to do is ask my friend and Vice Chairman of the Oaklusa County Commission, Mel Ponder, to give us an invocation. Followed by I will lead us into Fledge of Allegiance. You'll stand with me.
Let's pray. Oh, good and precious Lord, we welcome your peace and your presence into this place. God, I give you thanks for everyone in this room for the gift and call of God upon their life. Lord, your word says it's irrevocable. Lord, I thank you today that each of us being elected by the community, each community, Lord, have been called to lead our cities and our county in an area, Father, we pray and believe led by your goodness in your hand. Lord, your word says in Jeremiah that we're to pray for the peace and the blessings, the peace and prosperity of the cities to which we've been called because in their peace, so too we would have peace. So, Lord, today we release peace into this decision-making process. We release wisdom and understanding for each of us as we build and work together for what you've declared and decreed over this county and over each municipality and each citizen that's part of it. So, Lord, we thank you. We say, come, guide our hand, bless our troops and our first responders, those called into harm's way. We thank you for the hedge of protection you've given us around this county to protect us from storms, and we pray that would continue to remain in place. And we bless this meeting today, and thank you for it. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance. All right. So, in order to give you a sort of a little bit of order, I, the chairs, each respective entity to manage and or control sort of the speakers and the responses from the individual cities and county. And so, please, when your city is called upon to respond and or have the opportunity to speak, please go through your chair to make sure that your chair is sort of controlling each individual entities, speakers, and certainly we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. But in order to allow for some organization with this many public officials and type A individuals in a room, we want to make sure there is some semblance of organization. And so, certainly, your chairs or mayors have that ability to do that. But at the end of the day, I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to have a voice as we move through this process. And so, at this point in the agenda, it is time for public comment. We don't have any speaker cards that I know of here today, but I do want to open up the floor to the public. If there's anybody here from the public that wishes to speak to the group, if you'll come over to the lectern to my right. Very good. The next thing I'd like to do is is go around the room and have everybody that's here sitting at the table to just introduce yourself briefly, and that way we sort of have a lay of the land of who's here in the room. And so, I will start with Laurel Hill.
Morning, Bill Schatzel from City of Niceville.
Chad Morris, City of Niceville.
Jonathan Laird, City of Niceville.
Brian Taylor.
Ms. Sharon Shalton.
I think the buttons on the stem, y'all, these are a little bit different.
Think of Keith Williams, Town Manager, Town of St. Cobe.
Mayor Gene Hood, the town of St. Cobe.
Jeff McKenna, is Town Attorney for St. Cobe.
Lance Johnson, City Manager, City of Destin.
We destined City of Death.
Teresa A. Bear, Destin City Council.
Mayor Gary Jarvis, City of Destin.
Rodney Braden, City of Destin.
Jim Bagby, City of Destin.
Kevin Schmidt, City of Destin.
Johnny King, City of Destin.
Jeff Byrne, City of Destin.
Kyle Baumann, City of Destin, City Attorney.
Doug Cap, City of Crestview.
Cindy Brown, Councilwoman from Crestview.
Joe Blocker, City Councilman, Crestview.
Shannon Hayes, City of Crestview.
Mayor J.B. Whitten, City of Crestview.
Tim Baldock, City of Crestview.
John Holloway, City of Crestview Attorney.
Andrew Rensen, City of Crest.
Nathan Boyles, Oaklusa County Commissioner, District Three. The only district that goes north and south and has all the best parts of Oaklusa County.
I might beg to differ on that. Mel Ponder, Oaklusa County Commissioner, District Five, representing Destin and Niceville.
Trey Goodwin, County Commissioner, District Four.
Paul Mixon, County Commissioner, District One.
Lynn Hoshihara, County Attorney for Oaklusa.
John Hofstadt, Oaklusa County Administrator.
Carrie Parsons, TDC Attorney.
Greg Coffey, Oaklusa County.
Sandy Williams, Walton Beach.
David Schmidt for Walton Beach.
Dick Granerson, Mayor for Walton Beach.
Travis Smith for Walton Beach.
Kirby Locklear, Councilmember, City for Walton Beach.
Michael Beatty, City Manager for Walton Beach.
Mike Holmes, City for Walton Beach.
M.G. Moran, City for Walton Beach.
Hayward Dykes, City Attorney for Walton Beach. And I'll go ahead and I'm also the City Attorney for Mariestor, and I'm also the City Attorney for Valparaiso.
Bernie Oder, Mariestor.
Jared Cobb, City Manager, City of Mariestor.
Susan Coxwell, City of Mariestor.
Larry Carter, City of Mariestor.
Chris Stein, City of Mariestor.
Aaron Baki, Mayor of the City of Mariestor.
Margaret Mclemore, Mayor, City of Mariestor.
Tammy Johnson, City of Alprizo.
Thank you all for letting us know who you are. For our office up here at the Clerk's Office, to my right is Ms. Mary Carson, who is the Board Secretary for and a clerk of the Board. She will be taking minutes of this meeting. A point of note for the cities, she will only be taking specific minutes for decisions made by the County Commission. We will notate any decision, the result of any decision from the cities. However, your city clerks should take notes on specific decisions and who made the motions and so forth of the cities that are that are a party to the 164 action. And we've already had one inquiry. Should you need a copy of the tape of this meeting, please contact our office, Clerk's Office, through Ms. Carson. To my left is, I'm honored to let you know who this is. This is Josh Allen. He is a recent hire to the Clerk's Office and will be heading up our internal collection effort for the tourist development tax. For your information, we have already solicited and made an agreement with a collection software company that does compliance as well as collections through a company called Host Compliance. And so, Josh is new. He's been with me a day now. He's spent 22 years with the Tax Collector's Office, and it started the past internal collections for the Tax Collector in years past. And so, he's hit the ground running already, and we we hope to have the system of internal local collections up and running. Certainly, by the February 1 deadline, we hope to have it instituted in January. So, should any of the cities or city staff have questions or need Josh to come and explain what we're doing at the Clerk's Office for local collections, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. We want to be a partner for everybody in this program. So, next, what I would like to do in the in the agenda is a statement of issues from the August 18, 2021 Conflict Assessment Meeting. And I would like to call on Lynn Hoshihara from the County Attorney's Office to give us sort of a lay of the land of what came out of that meeting. And from there, I will move around the room to see if the the different entities have a difference of opinion of that lay of the land and make sure that we're talking all on the same sort of wavelength. So, Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On August 18, the county and the cities met for the first conflict assessment meeting pursuant to Chapter 164. During that meeting, after much discussion, the parties narrowed down the issue to two items. The first being in a local agreement to allocate the 12.5% tourist development tax revenue set aside for the municipalities. Following that discussion, following that meeting, the city attorneys, city managers have held several several meetings since then, and the ultimate decision was to have two separate interlocal agreements. One, just between the municipalities, that divvies up the 12.5% between the municipalities, and then a separate interlocal between the county and all of the municipalities where the county commits to setting aside or earmarking the 12.5% of TDT collections for use by the municipalities. So, that was the first issue. The second issue was representation on the Tourist Development Council. We had a proposal provided from the cities that lays out the TDC membership. County staff had a proposal included in the draft ordinance. Our Board of County Commissioners discussed that at yesterday's meeting and came up with a separate proposal. But those are the two issues that were narrowed from the Conflict Assessment Meeting, as I mentioned. Since then, the city attorney, city managers have been working. We've had so held several meetings. We have a draft interlocal agreement between the counties and the cities, as well as a separate interlocal amongst the cities, which I think is very, very close to being finalized and hopefully approved.
Thank you, Lynn. I will now call on Destin to see if they are in agreement with the issues at hand for this meeting.
I think Ms. Ms. Hoshihara summed it up very nicely, and I think just to kind of add, we have had numerous discussions with the other municipal leaders, city managers, and the county as well since the last meeting. And hopefully, it'll make the day much more efficient and productive and streamlined, and I'm very optimistic about today.
Thanks, sir. Destin, any other comments? That'll be all. Thanks, sir. Let me call on City of Walton Beach to see if they are in agreement with the statement of issues.
We definitely are. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody. You know, when you bring this many groups together, you never know what you're going to get, but it's it's in the meetings we've had, we've been able to accomplish a lot, and and we're we're right at the finish line, so we're optimistic about today.
Thanks, sir. City of Crestview.
We also agree on on the items that were just discussed. We also believe that we are at the point where we can make a decision today.
Very good. Thanks, sir. City of Mariestor.
Yes, we're also in agreement. I think it's been, as everyone has said, it's been a good process for us, for us all, and we just look forward to a good conversation today.
Very good. And I would like to bring in the the non-primary cities to make sure that they understand what the issues today are and see if they have any additional input. And I'll start with St. Cobe.
Yes, sir. We understand the issues and agree and appreciate the opportunity to be here to participate.
Very good. City Shalamar.
Yes, sir. We do understand, and we do agree.
Thanks, sir. City of Niceville.
We we understand what the issues are. We appreciate it, and everybody's hard work, and we are in agreement also.
City of Laurel Hill.
We do agree with the issues at hand.
That's it. Thank you. And the City of Valpique.
Yes, we agree with the everything that's going on in.
Thank you. All right. The next on the agenda is the interlocal agreements related to item number one, which was the 12.5% carve-out for the cities. And so, the first item of the interlocals is the interlocals between the municipalities. And so, who would like to take that up as a lead into that? It's my understanding that the principles to the 164 have quorums here. And so, should any of the cities or county want to take specific board or council action on one of these things, just let me know, and I will defer to your chair to 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 do that action. And so that we can, if we get to a point to where we we are ready to to take actions by the 164 participants and their bodies, just let me know. But let me open up to, is there anybody that would like to lead a conversation on the the interlocal agreements between the municipalities?
Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir.
So, the City of Crestview reviewed as a board last night the interlocal agreement that we have currently in draft and are prepared to vote on it today if if the rest of the municipalities are as well.
Thanks, sir. City Destin.
And I think if it gets to it, I think the city might be ready to vote on it today. They certainly can. I think one issue that arose yesterday that might need clarification before my board would be ready to vote on anything today would just be the makeup of the boards. I know that's kind of something that's going to be discussed maybe on the ordinance discussion or subsection B here. And so, I would say, because that's a large, very big issue to Destin having a position on that board. And so, I think they'll they'll want to hear something on that before they make any motions or move to accept anything today.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that the City of Destin would like to take up the representation issue before the interlocals?
I think that would be a logical step, maybe, to kind of, I think everything will flow from that. But I might be the only person in the whole room that thinks that, so you might want to ask them the other other cities.
Well, let me ask you this for first, before I move on from that. Is the city, is there a great deal of discussion that you would like to have on the 12.5% interlocal agreements? Or is the concern that as soon as you deal with the representation issue, that the city would probably be set to deal with the the interlocals without a whole lot of discussion? Is that what you're saying?
I think there's at least one board member that wants to ask a question, maybe more than one. And so, I think Ms. A. Bear, one of the city council members, would like to ask a question maybe to the county or just in general.
On the 12.5 interlocal or on the?
On the interlocal.
Okay.
Near the municipal.
So, so let's let's stick to that for just a minute, and then if we can't get past that, then we'll we'll see about going to the end. So, Destin, if you want to go and go with your speaker.
Thank you, Clerk. My question is, in a catastrophe that we would set aside the tax collection, the 12.5% during a catastrophe, why wouldn't you just continue it on? Because it'd still be 12.5% of whatever's coming in during that timeframe. 12.5 is, you get what you get, whether it's you're drawing in $2 million or $1 million or $500,000.
Okay, I think the comment, Mr. Coffey, is related to the force majeure events from the interlocals, and would you like to respond to that?
Yes, we anticipated two types of force majeure events. One is, well, really, it's a major hurricane is be the one, and you're absolutely correct that there are going to be events, and COVID is a classic example where revenues are going to rise and fall with that event. And even Sally wouldn't have been a major event. Those revenues would arose and fall. The reason that provision is in there is more like a Hurricane Michael type of Ben or the one that just hit Louisiana, where you have such a massive event. It's destroyed all your tourism facilities, all your beach walkovers and stuff like that. And in that situation, that revenue may have to be reduced temporarily or may have to be removed completely for a period of time in order to be FEMA deductibles and get those existing facilities rebuilt before we built, work on building new facilities. And what we've tried to do to accommodate that is extend the agreement to either make up for that lost revenue or to extend those timeframes. And the example I gave the cities when we talked is, if you think about COVID, all our revenues were affected. We have financing. We have obligations, ongoing obligations with those revenues that we deal with. And when those revenues were reduced from the state, every city, if they go out and get for debt or something else, they just need to make up contingencies or have some reserves in place to accommodate for those type of events. That event can't be held by tourism. We have to get our tourism stuff back up and running, our capital facilities back up and running. And that could be destruction of this facility. That could be destruction of all our beach crossovers. That could be a massive sand nourishment project. There could be a lot of things where we want to get, have that money or that flexibility. It may never happen, but in 20 years, it's likely to happen at least once. And if you look at Michael next door, they're still recovering today.
Destin, follow up.
Thank you.
And to kind of add to what Mr. Coffey said, I think Mr. Baumann wanted me to remind everyone, I believe it'll be tacking on to the end of the agreement if there's any suspension periods, correct?
That that is correct. It's either you're going to get additional months, so you'll get that revenue back at the end. You'll just have to, it'll be a temporary deferment, or if there's actual, let's say we don't need to, it's 12.5%, it reduces to 1 million, and we need to still reduce it further, that money will be made up as well either way. So, either there's a revenue reduction, or if it's completely, it'll be month per month on the back end of the agreement. So, to make a whole, that's how we try to balance that flexibility.
City of Walton.
We addressed the interlocals at a special meeting last Thursday, and since then, there have been some minor changes and some clarifications from from the county attorneys on questions that our council has. But I think we could be in a position to vote on the interlocals today if if needed.
Very good. City of Crestview, I think y'all are good.
Yes.
Other other cities here in the room, Mariestor?
Yes, we also had a meeting last night and reviewed the interlocal, and we would be comfortable with interlocal with the county.
Other cities? Okay, so it sounds like from from hearing from what Destin would like to do, I did want to get the conversation out of the way on the interlocals. And we can circle back to taking actions if if Destin feels like that we want to move on to the to the representation question first. But I did want to make sure we exhausted the the initial conversations on the interlocals. It appears we have. And so, what I like to do then is is let's move ahead to the representation on the tourist council, and let's have that conversation now, then we'll circle back to action item. And so, let me call on Mr. Beatty first for from Walton Beach.
Sure. And and thank you, J.D. I had asked to speak first just because one of these proposals on the table is is mostly mine. I I do understand the County Commission discussed this issue yesterday and came up with, I guess, a third proposal. And I just wanted to to clarify that, you know, I had heard there were some potential issues because there was thought that some of these council-appointed seats and and the city's proposal could could essentially be elected officials. And and I wanted to clear clear the air on that, say, the intent of the city's proposal was not to load the TDC with a lot of elected officials. It was to minimize the number of elected officials. And and I think we we essentially had three on there, and then the rest would be, you know, appointed either lodging or tourism industry representatives. You know, there there are a couple compromises that that we could throw out. You know, the Niceville seat and the small city seat, we do have council-appointed. But you know, if if the B.O.C.C., you know, y'all have the final authority to appoint all of the seats anyways. So, if we needed to make changes to where that was the case, then then I think, you know, that would be be okay. But we we would rather keep the geographic areas of those seats just because we, the reason why we proposed it this way was to try to mimic how the tourism industry in Oaklusa County is. And 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 by doing the way we did, we we feel we had accomplished that. So, there, you know, I I would like to have a discussion on this just so we can figure this out, because I think we're 99% there. And I think the the proposals are very, very close minus the geographic areas. So, just wanted to to throw that out there. Thank you, J.D.
Yes, sir. And the county and Madam Chair, for your knowledge, I have sort of instructed all the other chairs that that the chairs will control sort of the the speakers from unless they're specifically asked to speak from each entity. And so, I want to make sure that you, you as chair, know that you can sort of control your world. But I think it's probably appropriate to to move to the county if there's a response to and comment on the representation.
I believe Commissioner Boyles was going to summarize the board's action from yesterday's board meeting.
So, Madam Chair has delegated to our Vice Chair to keep us all in order for the moment. Since he's got the microphone in front, and I believe I've been authorized by the Vice Chair to speak. Thank you, sir. So, and so I wanted to kind of guess clarify on the geographic distribution. I certainly think getting good geographic distribution and representation across the county is very important. Certainly, I've got the the largest geographic district, and so I want to make sure that every area is being fairly represented. I also wanted to make sure we were being very sensitive to really what the mission of the TDC is, and that is the marketing component of our collective community. And so, you know, Jennifer, our tourism expert, certainly expressed some concern about making sure that she is able going forward to always be able to staff her recommending body, the TDC, with folks that have good industry expertise. And so, I think the only concern with the geographic distributions that was in the county's original proposal that I had keyed in on was not unintentionally hamstringing her. I I'll say very honestly, as a commissioner who has at times had to fill various volunteer boards from someone who lives in my district, it can be a challenge sometimes to get enough folks to apply that meet the criteria, that are willing to donate their time, that are willing to be subject to the public scrutiny that comes with serving in one of those volunteer roles, as I'm sure many of you know, on your city council roles. And so, I was simply trying to find a way that we could still get some language that would give good geographic distribution, right? So, to give, make that a primary concern in the selection process, but not overly hamstring this, because there may be in the first year or two a challenge in finding from Crestview Laurel Hill area, someone who is, has the knowledge base and is also willing to donate their time and be subject to the public scrutiny. And so, it's not just, are there people within each area who could fill the role? The question is, are there people in each area who are willing to fill the role? And so, that was really where I was going yesterday in our commission meeting in suggesting maybe that we strike those independent geographic hard requirements. Now, again, as for one commissioner, I I can live with them being in there or not being in there, but I can tell you that your tourism experts right now really just want to make sure that for the for the marketing side, where our TDC really should be giving us guidance, they want to make sure that they are able to get the best and brightest that are willing to serve in in those roles.
And then with the, thank you, Commissioner Boyles, and the with the elected positions on there, obviously, the border have a seat, the Crestview, the largest municipality have a seat. It comes down to the other two, which are part of the presentation, is Destin and Fort Walton Beach, or even both. You know, obviously, Destin is a community that's back, is built on the tourism, a lot of laws, ordinances they pass have to do with tourism, because that's their community. And so, have it, and that's a natural elected position to also. have to do with tourism. That's their community. And so having, that's a natural elected position to also include. And then Fort Walton, Michael, obviously, that discussion should be aired out today about what that looks like for Walton. But I thought it was key to have those elected still part of it. And then then as Jennifer approached us, it's kind of like anything, you want your best team on the field. And so when you open tourism continues to open up, not only, you know, within Florida, but also nationally and internationally. Our competitive stage becomes almost worldwide to a degree. And so her concern is what Commissioner Bowles said, she came to us and said, hey, we want to protect those electeds from these cities that that are part of the the elected part. But outside of that, giving her the flexibility, being sensitive to some geographical, you know, inclusion, but putting the best team on the field for those aboard appointed positions. And so that was what kind of we discussed yesterday is making sure Destin had an elected position on the board. The county, Crestview, and then Fort Walton was discussed as well. And either that being elected or maybe appointed tourism from your council, perhaps, Michael. But that's kind of how we ended up. And then the other geographic here or not is is putting the best team on the field.
And in follow up to Commissioner Ponder's comments and having discussions with some of the city attorneys. I think the proposal would be to have, in addition to the BCC member, Crestview City Council member, because of the most populous municipality, a Fort Walton Beach City Council member as an elected rep and a destined city council member as a tourism rep with the justification that, as Commissioner Ponder stated, Destin is the largest bed tax collector, is involved in tourism. Therefore, it would be appropriate for Destin City Council to appoint any elected member on for that seat. We could, regardless of their profession, we can include some legal finding legislative findings in the ordinance that specifically states that. So that ultimately, the board and the three municipalities, Crestview, Fort Walton Beach and Destin will all have elected seats. Although one will be technically a tourism seat that could be filled with any elected member.
And I think that kind of addresses the biggest concern that Destin had to ensure in that one position. And I don't know if any of the city council members will have any questions based upon what Ms. Oshiar said. But from my understanding is they're willing to put into the ordinance just defining that the city of Destin representative can be an elected official and but also they'll count as a tourism representative based upon the fact that the city of Destin is so tourism based. And I don't know if any, the board here wants to ask a question about that. Because I know that that's a really germane central issue to the city of Destin. And like I said at the start, that once we get some clarification on that, I think it'll be a lot smoother for the city of Destin today. And I know it's a little myopic, it's not addressing the other geographical breakdowns that on some of the plans. But I think Destin's more focused on their one position. So.
Before we start pursuing that one issue, let me make sure I I heard the county attorney indicated that there's a possibility from the county's perspective that both Walton and Destin would have an elected member so long as one of those is also representative of the tourism industry. Or was it that either both could have elected officials?
Both could have elected officials. We would deem any any one of the destined council members as filling that tourism seat. Because Destin as a whole is backed by the tourism.
Very good. So I want to clarify that for Destin to make sure Destin understood that that any member that they appointed would be deemed the tourism rep, but it's an elected official. So Destin.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to you, Gary.
Um, yes, and your comments concerning about putting that writing in the ordinance would be strongly supported and appreciated by our council. And I do have one question from council member Smith.
Thank you. For clarification, the way it's proposed right now where it says destined or for Walton Beach council member. Is that going to be a strike through where it will actually just say for Walton Beach council member as the city council point elected rep? And then the next one will be Destin or is always going to have an or option? Because then you're theoretically going to be able to have two for Walter, two destined there.
No, we will, based on the discussion and commitment that we've just expressed, we would change that to say, as you stated, the.
Okay, that's that's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Uh, city crush you?
Uh, we're, you know, we're, as as I mentioned yesterday to the board, the city of Crestview is comfortable with the distribution. Either way, we definitely prefer to have the the breakup by geography. We think that gives a little bit better, especially if they're specifically to the tourism industry. We think our tourism needs will be slightly different than Destin's possibly. So so we we like the idea of ensuring that we have our our representative will be an elected official based on statute. So, you know, we liked the idea of having the opportunity to have someone from the tourism industry north of the river, as we like to say. However, we we do believe we're in a position, we can support either of the options. And we appreciate the county's willingness to clearly define for Destin's benefit what that seat would look like.
See for all.
Yes, and and I'll echo what Tim just said. I think what the county has proposed, especially with the elected officials, addresses some concerns that my council had had expressed last Thursday. And and as far as the makeup of the rest of the board, we can support either one. I would like to throw out, if we get rid of the geographic areas, could we potentially create some more definite guidelines on on who can fill those seats or what type of industry reps could fill those seats? Because the statute's pretty broad and and maybe we can just work work together on some.
Just one second, but outside, when y'all came in, there were some sheets about and and the wording that Len had put together that I mean, I think dresses some of what Tim said, maybe Michael, where you're going is you have the electeds. But in terms of the at large, should the board shall use its best efforts to appoint a geographically diverse council that meets the statutory requirements, which puts us as a board just to be sensitive to that. But at the same time, even as Commissioner Bowles talked about, there may not be a player perhaps in an area prepared for this, whether it's their own time, their own constraints or whatever. And so the board may may look across the whole county, but ultimately pick means so I that's the wording that Len and Len that's very different. That's I thought that was kind of covered that basis.
See Mary?
Yes, I I think, you know, we would certainly support the proposal that was submitted by city of Walton Beach. That would be our preferred alternative. I think one of the things that hasn't been brought up here is we're talking about diversity amongst different geographic regions of the county. But it's also important to know that smaller cities have different tourism needs than our larger communities. And so that's the primary reason why we would support that alternate proposal.
The other cities want to comment? Back to the county then, or it sounds like we've we've solved the the first four, the top four based on the county attorney's recommendation. And it sounds like we have at least an understanding from the cities that that there is no concern over either option. And it appears that the county is recommending to remove the geographical areas from the the left side of your of your little spreadsheet while making the statement that they shall appoint geographically diverse council. And so it it sounds like that's really where we're settling now. Is that correct? County?
Yes, that's that's correct, but it's best efforts on a geographically diverse.
Okay, so let me go around the room and see if there's any follow up comments, Destin.
We're good.
Crafty?
We're good.
For all.
We're good.
Very yes.
I'm sorry, could you restate what that?
It sounds like with the conversation and the the input from the county is that the first four are basically settled with statutorily, the board having a seat, the city of Crestview is the largest city having a seat. And then the city of Destin and the city of Walton having an appointed seat that could be their a a elected official. And that it's the the indication from the county attorney that any elected official appointed by Destin would serve as a tourism rep because of the tourism industry in Destin. And then based on what Commissioner Ponder said, that there would be a removal of the geographic designations to the five appointees in that left side of that column. However, there would be a statement, I'm assuming would be in the ordinance, which would say that the board will make all best efforts to appoint a geographically diverse council.
I believe we would be agreeable to that.
Other cities, any input?
Dixie Dan Powell on the behalf of the city of Niceville. As my understanding, whether when the cities and I met and we all met at the city of Nashville, we were Nashville was going to have a and a representative on the board. Is that now changed?
I think I I can answer that based on the conversations. The city of Nashville would not have a direct appointee. I I believe I heard yesterday at the board meeting that the the count, the commission would certainly take recommendations from all the different councils and cities as a recommendation. But I I believe that there, we're not falling on the side of the presentation and that includes a nice bull direct appointee.
Is there a problem with having a lodging or tourism rep from the city of Niceville on the board?
Okay.
Oh, no, what what our board had determined was rather than make that a strict requirement that they would, they would try to appoint geographically diverse members, but not have them any of them appointed by any city council. So as Mr. Peacock stated, the board would be open to any of the city councils making recommendations. But because as Commissioner Boyle stated, there may be times where you don't have someone who meets all the qualifications, who's willing to serve on the TDC from that area, this provides a little more flexibility. So this does not, this does not eliminate Niceville having a representative from the lodging or tourism industry. It just that representative would not be appointed by the Nashville city council.
For him.
That's Scott Money Penny from Laurel Hill again. I just on the geographical areas, again, tourism throughout throughout the whole county is very, very diverse. And I want to make sure that not just the city of Laurel Hill, but all of us in the in the north end of the county have have representation in in what we believe is tourism. Just one fact that last time I researched it, that in the in the state of Florida, Okaloosa County sells the most hunting licenses than any other county in the state. So, you know, some people don't think tourism is is hunting is tourism. But you know, when deer season opens up, come up north and see what's going on. So I want to make sure that those type of things are are captured because I believe that that there is and there is some things that can take place in the north end of the county. From birds and deer, there's quite a bit of fishing. We've got a little lot of little things going on, but I want to make sure that that in the tourism side of it, that that's understood. That it's, again, I've made the statement before, we're not all bikinis and fast boats. All right, thank you. Thank you, Destin, because we do love that part of it. But I want to make sure that we've got some representation in the north part of the county for other types of tourism. Like I said, hunting is a big aspect of it, a lot of outdoor sports. We've got, you know, the trails, Florida trails and stuff up there. But I do like the way it's broken down and I like the way the county's handling this. If we, as long as we as a city can come to the county and say, hey, we would like representation or we would like this brought up, I'll 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 definitely go along with that.
Anybody else?
Mr. Clerk?
Mary Esther.
I'd just like to say, first of all, you know, I thank everyone for coming to the table on this. I think this is a great proposal for everyone, all the municipalities and the county involved. However, I just don't see any reason why the county cannot accommodate the smaller cities and have them representation on this council. If I remember my history lessons from years back, it's no taxation without representation. And I think that still applies today. And Mr. Boyle, if I might say, I don't think he meant it to come out the way it did. But you made it sound like someone from some of the smaller municipalities could not find someone qualified to serve on this board. I disagree with that. I believe we can, and I believe that should be up to the municipalities. Thank you.
Oaklus County.
Thank you, sir. No, certainly, that was not what I intended to to say. What I said was, as a commissioner representing more than half of Okaloosa County geographically, because half of Okaloosa County geographically sits in District Three, it can at times be challenging to find volunteers to step up to fill volunteer positions. And that includes my district, including portions of Incorporated Crestview and Niceville and Valparaiso and Fort Walton Beach. And so I am at least able to speak to those portions of those cities that are inside my district and say, it's just the reality of sometimes finding folks that are both talented and willing to to give up their time. I do think it's important to recognize, number one, we've tried really hard to come with an accommodation here. And so pre-expansion of bed taxing district, your cities had no guarantee of an allocation of dollars. And so that's the first thing that we came with was we're going to guarantee an allocation going forward. And I think that, you know, I just don't want us to forget that that was the first half of this thing. We're now trying to close, close the deal, but the first half of this was taking 12 and a half percent of those revenues and then putting those into the direct control of the cities. And so you're going to adopt an inter local and you're going to make the decision as to how to spend those dollars. The county is not going to make that decision for you. So your inter local is your representation as to that portion of those bed tax dollars. And so it absolutely is not taxation without representation. And in fact, the county's been very careful to say, we do not want to be a part of that inter local agreement. We want you guys to sort out how you spend your money. The only thing the county is going to do, the county attorney and the clerk are going to make sure that it is in compliance with statute. And as long as you're not getting the county in in legal jeopardy, then you'll be able to spend those dollars as you see fit. But I also want to speak to the bigger picture that at the end of the day, whether we like it or not, this county commission, whoever it is that fills these seats in the in the future, is the final decider about how bed tax dollars are spent. And that's the statute. Now, until the statute changes, we all live within that structure. And so we can put these additional pieces in place. But at the end of the day, the final decision is how these dollars will be spent. It has to be made by this commission. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think it's actually a good thing because this commission represents the entire county. We are beholden to every corner of this county to frankly, get elected and then to keep our seats once we've been elected. And so I think that we've shown that there is absolutely an appetite to fairly represent every corner of the county and not just one area or another. Indeed, that's why we're looking at trying to expand the bed tax district so that we can fairly represent everybody across the entire county, not just one section over the other. And so I'm just really confident that we will get to a place where everyone's going to feel good about how much money they're getting and about how the money is being spent across this county. The reality is we just, the system doesn't work where we give every city a seat. One could argue if we're going to give any city a seat, you know, if Niceville wants a seat, why doesn't Mary Esther get a seat? And if Mary Esther's getting the seat, Valparaiso should have a seat. And at some point, you've got nine TDC seats that are filled by nine elected officials who, very honestly, and myself included, aren't experts on the expenditure of bed tax dollars or on marketing to to a national audience. And so I I think we've come a long way. I think this issue about representation on the TDC, which is at the end of the day, a recommending body, has no authority whatsoever. I don't want us to let it that get us off track from how far we've come and where we need to get this thing where we can close the gap and and go on as as one county, one community. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, I just want to simply add to that, that just because there's been some discussion from Niceville now and and Mary Esther, but the the, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It is that, you know, it doesn't forbid them or any the community to come forth and say, hey, county, you know, Commissioner Bowles or Ponder or Ketchum, I mean, hey, we've got A, B, or C, you know, hotelier tourism partner. And they're excellent. They have this, they can impact their multiple jurisdictions. Like a Nick Sarah, for example, I mean, he's got restaurants in Destin, Okaloosa Island and Niceville. He's on there now. And so it doesn't forbid them from coming saying, hey, they these are the reasons why they should be added to the board and as one of the five commission appointed seats. So it's still, that door is still wide open for members of their community to be recommended by their community to to the commission to make those selections. But other than the four, which are the electeds that allow those open opportunities for communities to recommend somebody to us.
I think.
I I think, uh, Destin's ready to make motion, actually, as what I've been told, uh, on the issue, uh, that might streamline everything real quick, at least as regards Destin.
Okay. Hold on just a second. Let me get, Mary Esther wanted to follow up.
There's a way, um, in completion of this that guarantees a diverse council, um, in the appointed positions that are now scratched out, that they are spread out, that it's not weighted in one corner of the county or, um, because if you're going to expand it, then it should be diverse.
I I would just, if I may, Mr. Clerk, thank you, sir. You, yes, you will hold us accountable, whoever is sitting in these seats. You know, it's, it's, the language will be, will be there, um, and if it, we are not meeting the language, then I would expect your cities, you know, let's be honest, you have a bully pulpit. Si- city gets together and passes a resolution, uh, and it speaks. Um, I can assure you, you will get the attention of the county commission, uh, if you feel like we're not, um, fulfilling that obligation. Now, I'd ask that you ask nicely first, let us know if you think we're screwing it up before you jump straight to your resolution. But at the end of the day, if we're not doing it right, um, then I think you will be able to get our attention. And I'll add to that through your interlocal, you're going to be working as a team moving the ball and that will carry that much more weight at the end of the day. I've seen what y'all can do when you get together and get aligned, uh, and it's pretty powerful. And I can assure you, you will have the attention of whoever it is, uh, that is sitting in the elected seats, uh, of this county commission in the future.
So you, Destin?
Mr. Clerk, uh, I'd like to move to accept interlocal agreements contingent on the city of Destin having a representative on the TDC board as proposed by Ms. Lynn Hushahara.
I'll second that.
We got a motion, a second.
Real quick, if you will restate the motion again, I could quite hear you.
Sure. I move to accept the interlocal agreements contingent on the city of Destin having a representative representative on the TDC board as proposed by Lynn Hushahara.
Okay, just to clarify, that would be the board's representation of the of the four elected officials as well as the non-geographic, uh, appointment of the other members of the tourism industry, as well as the statement related to that the board will make best efforts to be geographically diverse.
I think, uh, Destin's, again, being a little more myopic on the issue of just, uh, they would vote kind of like the county did yesterday contingent on the other cities accepting what they proposed yesterday. Destin, I think the motion here is the that they'll accept the interlocal agreements contingent on the city of Destin getting the position as proposed by the county attorney just a few minutes ago and how they would be treated. I think they're leaving the rest of the issue on the the greater makeup of the board till, uh, later discussion here today. But I think just to kind of get moving, at least for Destin's purposes, they just want to make a a contingent motion, uh, contingent on that one issue.
Okay, so so basically what I'm hearing then is that you approve the makeup of the council so long as, given the discussion, so long as the city of Destin gets that elected position. And that's the the motion from your council.
He's done, yes, uh, Councilmember Schmidt is done, yes. Is that, uh, your second, Mr. King?
Okay. All right, I'll defer to the mayor to finish that.
And at this time, we'll go ahead and, uh, take a roll call vote of the, uh, motion made by Councilmember Schmidt and second by Councilmember Kane. Mr. Destin. This, Hey Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Fagby? Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Eyes have it, so moved.
Thank you, sir. All right, I I believe that that sort of
Mr. Clerk?
We have heard from Destin, uh, Crash.
Yeah, I believe Crestview's ready to make a motion as well.
Go ahead, sir.
I could have action on the motion, please.
Mr. President, my motion is to accept both interlocal agreements in contingent on Destin getting an elected seat as discussed.
Okay, I've heard a motion in a second. I mean, a motion in a second. Uh, roll call, please. How do you vote, Councilman, uh, Caps?
Yes.
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 Councilwoman Brown? And Councilman Rensich? Okay, the city of Crestview votes in favor of that motion.
Thank you, sir. Since we're, we're moving right along, let's go to the city of Fullwell Beach. I believe we are ready to, uh,
Mr. Chairman?
Move, uh, who's, oh, I'm sorry, if you'll hold on just a second.
Question, please, sir. I understand the motion to be that both interlocal agreements are now being considered together.
And i- i- it appears that that was, it was that Destin's, I knew that they had the interlocal agreement up for the county. You're, you included both?
Their their motion, uh, for the Destin board included both.
Okay.
As did Crestview.
As did Crestview, so yes, or both.
Point of order would be that I would prefer to consider them both separately rather than, uh, that consider them each separately rather than both together. I have some questions about the interlocal agreement between municipalities that I would like to ask.
And and so I I would state sort of for maybe the the operation of the of the individual entities, that the, I don't want to sort of direct the cities to do it one way or the other. Certainly, your city can decide to bifurcate those, but I think what you're hearing is that the cities who have made the decision to to put them together, that you and I believe that I heard Destin say that that's contingent upon, uh, the other cities, uh, working out the the city municipality. Second point?
The other point of war is the primary participants have, uh, a higher status anyway. And so we're kind of going through those anyway right now. And Shalimar's not a primary participant.
Yes, so that that that's a good point as well. It really, the Shalimar's got one interlocal that you're, you're really focused on, uh, as to the, uh, the chapter one sixty-four interlocal.
We understand that. I, my question remains, and I would like to ask it at some point.
Yes, sir. Paul, meet? Mr. Mayor?
Fullwell Beach, I believe we're ready to make a motion.
Also like to motion to move forward with the, uh, interlocal agreement contingent on Fullwell Beach having an elected position at the board.
That's both interlocals or just the interlocal of the county?
Both.
Both. Okay.
Is there a second? Mr. Moran seconds, and we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Moran? Mr. Holmes? Mr. Locklear? Mr. Smith? Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Brian Thomas?
Thanks, sir. And so the next party to, unless the county wants to jump on, I believe the next party to the one sixty-four is Mary Esther.
Approve both of the interlocal agreements. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Stein. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Baki?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Ms. Coxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Oda?
Yes.
So that's both, both interlocals? Thank you very much. All right, uh, I believe it is, it revolves in the county's court at this point.
Commissioner Bowles make her motion.
So as I understand it, and Lynn jumped in, correct me if I'm wrong, the commission yesterday, we took action that approved the interlocals, um, subject to, um, the city's action or the interlocal, excuse me, subject to cities adopting that. So we, as I understand, don't need to take action on the interlocal today. What we can do, will do, will be to direct staff, um, to make changes to the proposed ordinance, which is, was tabled yesterday and is coming back to the board for public hearing and vote in two weeks' time. But, uh, and so my motion would be to direct, uh, staff to make, uh, the stated changes to the proposed ordinance. It brings the ordinance, uh, in conformance with the actions of the councils here today. Uh, specifically, I believe, uh, that is to adjust the TDC composition such that Crestview, Destin, and Fort Walton Beach will have, uh, elected representation via the city of Destin. That will include a finding within the ordinance that because of Destin's unique position within the tourism industry, uh, that a, any member, uh, representing the city of Destin meets the statutory requirements, um, to serve as a tourism, uh, uh, representative. And, uh, that the geographic, uh, inclusion language, uh, that was proposed, uh, and includes, uh, the best efforts, uh, to obtain a geographically diverse council will be included within the ordinance. And then finally, that the, uh, individual, uh, geographic, um, designators for the, um, lodging and tourism representatives, uh, that are listed in green and the column on the left will be, uh, struck out of the proposed ordinance. Did I cover that, Lynn?
Yes, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Hushahara? Oh, Chair, I can't say, yeah, a second. Commissioner Mixon, we have a recommendation, Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner Mixon, roll call vote, Chair Ketchel? Hi, Commissioner Bowles?
Hi.
Mr. Goodman? Mr. Mixon? And I'm an I, five of, Mr. Clerk, thank you so much.
Thanks, sir. Okay, I think, uh, now it would be appropriate to go back while I don't know that Shalimar's the municipality interlocals, real quick for a point of clarification, uh, I do not believe that the that the chapter one sixty-four issue requires the cities not participating in the one sixty-four as a primary. I don't think it requires their adoption of the municipalities, uh, in a local agreement. That can be done at a later time. Uh, am I agree with that attorney?
I want to ask Ms. Hushahara what their understanding is on it. I think the county's not a party at all to the interlocal amongst the municipalities, but it does, uh, the interlocal between the county and the municipalities makes a reference to the the other interlocal. And so I think if you want to get the position of anyone, the cities would love to have the county party to both, but I don't think that's, uh, part of the, uh, proposed interlocal of the day, so I'll turn over Ms. Hushahara.
Well, I I know that the the county adopted the the county municipality interlocal yesterday, is that correct? Okay, so that the the county has already done the action that you took just now.
That's, that's correct. Uh, as far as the non-primary parties or cities, uh, they are not required to take action today. They can at their next city council meeting consider, uh, both interlocals.
And so, so now I think it's back to Mr. Chester and Shalimar. Uh, certainly will entertain your your input and concern, uh, but I think because of the the chapter one sixty-four issue and the and the primaries, ha- having disposed of the interlocal questions, but I certainly want to hear your your concerns and certainly that way everybody can hear.
Uh, thank you. But I, but I apologize to all of you. I have been instructed to stand down on these issues by the town of Shalimar until yesterday, when I was told, don't stand down, let's stand, let's read this thing and figure out how it affects us. That was not from the mayor, by the way, but from, uh, from the sources in Shalimar that I listened to. Having read it now, I looked at the agreement and among municipalities, the question, I had several questions, but one of them, why do we put a legal fee provision in this agreement other than the fact that lawyers like to do that? Everything I've seen in this meeting and elsewhere is that no one, no lawyer in no city is going to ask a question which is not in good faith asked, that we all want to understand this agreement, to the extent that one of us has an issue about it, if that were to end up in a courtroom. I really don't think it's appropriate for either Shalimar, Mary Esther, Crestview, or anybody else to have to ask that question to a judge. Please interpret this thing for us and pay the legal fees for another seven cities if a judge says that and disagrees with one or the other. I don't want to have to go to court and be arguing about something as personalized as that might be. I want it to be an academic question, as I think it otherwise can be. Again, to the lawyers in this room, I apologize that I am presenting this for the first time. I understand you've had some meetings. I think if we were drafting this thing initially, we might choose to just take that provision out of this agreement. There may be other questions I would ask. I won't bother you to do that today. I feel almost like I'm standing on the platform watching the train go by, and that's a bit of what it is. But I want you to know, I think we're redrafting that again, and that provision needs to come out of this interlocal agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any response or additional comments? Destin?
Daylight dollar short.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there was, there was actually quite a bit of conversation about that veto provision, and eight of the nine cities, uh, participated in the process and all are comfortable with why that veto provision is in there. I'm happy to take the time to meet with Shalimar following this meeting and explain it to him.
Very good. Other comment? Okay, so I I believe at this point we have disposed of the, or at least taken care of the, uh, participant, one sixty-four participants in relation to the, uh, both interlocals, a- a- as well as the county has, uh, indicated of the adoption in the ordinance of the makeup of the representation on the board. Uh, and really it throws it to, uh, the the discussion of resolution of the issues. It it sounds like the issues have been resolved, uh, so long as there is not a participant that uh, adamantly opposes the county's solution on the the tourist development representation. And so I believe that's probably our final piece of business here. Uh, do the participant, primary participant, one sixty-four entities have a, uh, significant concern, concern that would derail, uh, the process in relation to the county's, uh, adoption of that language for representation? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is adjournment, but I wanted to make sure that we, uh, got anybody's input that had not had a chance to speak, Ms. Hushahara.
Uh, just as a housekeeping matter, I would request that, uh, either the city attorneys or the city managers, please email me, uh, the signatories for each of your entities. As you've seen, the draft in a local agreement doesn't include any signature pages. And so if you could just email who will be signing on behalf of your cities, that would be very helpful. And then I'm, I'm happy to send out a final version of the interlocal for, uh, execution.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Clerk, I just want to thank you for, um, raising your hand and being willing to step in and mediate between all of us. Uh, your leadership was impeccable and I appreciate, uh, you, uh, and also taking one to come forward to do the local collection. Uh, you, uh, shined brightly and I I just want to say from my perspective, I'm sure from the others in the room, we owe you a a great bit of thanks and I appreciate your leadership.
Certainly, thank you, sir. It's our pleasure to, uh, to assist everybody. It's certainly our responsibility.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
One, one, one real quick, uh, piece of housekeeping. For the, for the cities, we also have to get the, the, this interlocal signed by everybody and then circulated. Mr. Beatty, do you mind heading that up?
I'll take care of that. We'll, we'll get it in final form and make sure everybody's, uh, okay with it and then get everybody to sign it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Well?
Mr. Clerk, yeah, thank you. I I just wanted to say, I'm like really proud of our county. I don't know if y'all watch what's going on maybe in other counties, east or west or both, uh, of Okaloosa County, but, um, I mean, we're, we are proving to be the adults in the room right now in Northwest Florida, and I'm just proud of us. And I think that goes for everybody in here. Uh, I don't know that, you know, I've ever seen, Okaloosa County has come a long way in the last decade, I'll say it that way. We've got good leadership, it looks like to me, and that includes our cities and our county. Uh, the ability to work something this, you know, potentially contentious as a, as a group, as a community, uh, is impressive. Uh, and I just think it's something to to be proud of. And so I I appreciate everybody who's who's participated in that and I'm proud to be part of Okaloosa County today.
Thank you. I will follow up on that, uh, and echo those concerns. We, we, our citizens are well represented in every corner of our county. Uh, I I believe I heard the word earlier that this is a historic event with all the cities in the county coming together to to hash out, uh, some concerns that will concern all of our residents and quite frankly, help our economic, uh, path forward in the future. And so I I want to thank all of you for being respectful, being part of the, part of the solution. Uh, it it's a rarity in this day and age, and we have proven that it can, can happen. At this time, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, one thing before we adjourn, I had to step out for here, and I just wanted to make sure that the Dixie Dan Powell on behalf of the city of Niceville, that Niceville will accept the interlocal agreement as proposed, but with a caveat, as I said earlier, we would like a representative on the board from the city of Niceville. With that said, I thank y'all all. We worked really hard to get this accomplished.
I believe I heard a motion from Destin to adjourn. Uh, is there a second? I'll take a second from Crestview. Uh, hearing no further comment, uh, all the favors that can be provided, saying aye. All right, the motion is carried. Thank you very much, everybody.